I'll look for it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, take care.
He's not staying, all right. That's interesting. That's interesting.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I was pleased to hear on the news that they're saying we have a better chance of rain this Sunday. God, I hope so.
So we have 2% instead of none, is that what you're saying?
No, we went from 10% till I got to 30% now. They said this highest backing off.
The humidity dropped off, you know, from my house left and right, it's just horrible. It's just been raining more than.
It was much better being outside today than it was a few days ago.
Oh, gosh, I can ima-.
It is, it is, but a few days back, I got home and I was, I was drenched, I mean, I was literally soaked just, just from sweating.
I always have flashbacks of being stationed back in Oklahoma because where we were stationed at at Altus Air Force Base, three days out of the year, it's hotter than Dead Valley.
Yeah.
And it, it barely gets to 90 at midnight.
Well, we don't let Oklahoma people in.
I'm not from Oklahoma.
I'm just going to take you down to the first.
Oklahoma.
But you go up at Merck, you go up at Merck and that, so.
Yeah, but that's civilization compared to Altus.
Yeah, exactly, that's what she said, that's what she said.
When, when we hit there, um, the biggest thing in town was a Super Walmart, still is. And three-fourths of the town shuts down by noon on Saturday, doesn't open up again until Monday. And it's like, ooh, no, no, no. And we got stationed there because my husband was the senior ranking out of the two of us. I looked at him and I said, this is your fault.
Oh, your fault.
Well, and then the mentality there, um, was they saw. And I mean, we had, we would be shopping, um, at, at the Wal- local Walmart, getting some stuff that the base couldn't have in the commissary. And one of the local gentlemen sounded right in the chat, and he came up, walked right past me, went to Joe and said, no, the women are not supposed to handle the money. And his wife was walking five steps behind him. And then I'm like, no, no, we're good, we're good, and he goes, your wife will be subservient to you.
Well, I could, I don't, I miss no marriage.
Yeah, no.
There's a little video we just.
Boy. I tell ya, it, just, just seeing that, it was like, where in the world? Because, I mean, I grew up in up and down the eastern seaboard, you know, from the Caribbean up and down to Newfoundland, Canada, everywhere in between.
Especially if it pops up.
So, never encountered anything like that.
That's it with the little water crossing and the get and the key.
Oh, boy.
Particularly key, you know, where they put the key.
Oh, the Knox box.
Knox box, it's two words before the Knox box.
Okay. That was a hard section to write.
Yeah.
I will say that right now, I don't want to write that anymore. That was tough. And if it made any sense at all, it's a miracle.
Go ahead, I'm in right here, right here. I just all of a sudden, Darren's gonna come and take me.
No problem, that's, it's, it's not subservient, it is definitely collaborative, so I'll make sure that he's there.
No problem.
I need to talk to somebody, so we're good.
Yeah, that sounds good, man. Keep me straight. Catch you later. How's it going?
Darren, doing good?
So when was the last time somebody actually was there? I don't remember seeing it. I don't remember seeing it. I think you ought to use it to start the meeting.
Yeah. Sure gets everybody's attention.
Yeah.
So when a friend of mine was elected president of our, uh, surveying association, I made him a, what they call a ball gown. So it's got a handle and a hammerhead underneath.
Oh, nice.
So you can pound with your fist and go in there and put a, uh, gun in the cup plate with the air.
Yeah, I, I gave it off, I had to take my jacket off. Y'all don't report me to the U.S. Department, please.
I figured he'd pass it on, but he didn't, he kept it.
Hello, hello.
Hey, what's going on?
Hey. Golly.
It's a prodigal return.
Right, 100%?
Yeah.
A little lazy.
Don't care that.
How are you?
Hi, how are you?
Good to see you.
Sir.
Good to see you, Paul.
How are you? What's going on?
Darren. Doctor King, how are you?
Doing good.
Doctor Dallas, how are you doing? Are you good?
There you go.
How you doing?
Since I sit in front of a computer.
I'm so tired of looking at screens. Like, no, no more screens, DVD picture. That's the property number. Steel, just they know. Washing it on the brass.
I put, I put that in there.
Twenty years.
Really, when you're using it, you can see the graphs on this side, so usually the graph's printed on the back.
Yeah.
I'm really into drawing on the outside.
And, and in the military, we have meetings that, we'd have one individual, like, we'd just go off the wall, off the topic and everything. We'd basically bring and get dry paper and say on top. And the commander would come down. Oh, it's your turn to color today. That's the term.
And, uh. I didn't.
Last, last Tuesday, I killed my big German shepherd. I met my big German shepherd.
Skunk again?
Yes.
We had that experience this week.
They have been going nuts.
My, my dog was out in the morning and, uh, he was barking and making a racket. My wife goes out to see what's going on, and she comes back and says, it's skunk in here. And I go, oh, he's dancing around. Not very close. So I call him, and he doesn't come, I call him, take three or four times, and finally he comes over and grab all of it, and we go inside. Come back out, the skunk's gone, I mean, it, it escaped.
Crazy. I mean, oh, gosh.
It was only 109 left, the ratchet.
Like overboarding rings or something, they're everywhere.
It's the heat's bringing everything out.
Oh, I tell you.
I think they'd stand a hole.
Do what?
One ten yesterday. The ranch, I mean, that's, doing by an old school thermometer. It was warm enough.
Can't wear a rubber sole shoes, she is gonna stick her.
Oh, God, I had.
Everybody's done any Thursday at my place.
We have, we had a tension, like, when I was a drill sergeant at the base there, we were having retreats.
Standing on the charmat.
My, couldn't move. And my low quartered soles were melting to the charmat, and you're trying to wiggle your toes, but they felt like they're on fire. Oh, yeah, I lost many a pair of shoes.
That paper gets hot.
Oh, I tell you, those low quartered in combat, yep.
I mean, even this, today, you know, you put something down, do something, come back, pick it up, that rassle's toasty.
Well, that's just like, uh, Joe and Chris for solving, like, the bags of concrete.
Oh, yeah.
You know, even if they're not in the direct sunlight, you go to pick it up.
Oh, yeah, that.
It feels like there is a hot brick that's on fire and everything, so. It's like, okay, put gloves on then. Otherwise, put toothpaste on your hands for the burns, because the fluoride neutralizes the burns.
There you go.
And now you know, and all is well.
He's gonna charge me. He's like, Bill isn't a man.
Aw, come on. Thank you, drinking beer with me.
Oh, no, see, I can't do that, no. Give Todd a second to start it up.
All right, should we just go all the way back?
I posted my air fridge this week.
I saw that, that was impressive.
See, I have an alcohol. That's it. He has your friend, I have the alcohol.
I like you, I like, I like this girl one more.
I mean, show from ceiling to down.
What's that?
Paul is gonna do the invocation.
Great, well, thank you. Okay, so let's call the, uh, the meeting to order at 5:00. Roll call, everybody's here. Mostly. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please stay standing.
Please join me in, in prayer. Pray, Lord, that you would bless us this evening, that you would join us, empower us, encourage us, enlighten us, and help us, Lord, to make good and proper decisions, and do the best we can individually and as a group for the best for the city of Castroville. Please bless this country and this state today, or as we have an election and as we proceed to with other civic and, uh, social needs, pray that you would take this nasty disease away, nasty virus away, and we pray that you do all of these things in Jesus' name, amen.
So, item number five, let's open it up to citizens' comments, do we have anybody online? Just give us a second, we'll double check, okay? We're getting there. Hey, while we're waiting, I just wanted to thank city staff again for putting up these, these Plexiglas shields. We had, uh, somebody reached out to me and, and was commenting on the fact that we are not wearing masks. At this point, we are staying socially distanced, uh, we are definitely taking this seriously and, uh, being very, very careful about that. That's one of the reasons that we had delayed one of the council meetings so that we could have this constructed. So, um, this is a really important time to, to keep everybody safe, and just wanted to make sure that everybody realized that these, although they're see-through, they are, um, carriers.
Thanks for taking care of us.
They did it?
What was I muted on?
Okay. So we're unable to unmute you right now, just a second.
And my audio, my audio that I normally use on the side will not let me record any of this.
Okay.
Livestream's going great.
Okay.
I'll see a person. See you.
Let's do this, do you want to just, uh, type, well, they, they can't see that, right? How about if we do it like this? If you want to call in, uh, you can just call my mobile phone, it's, uh, two.
Caller number two is unmuted.
Caller number two is unmuted? Okay.
We've got one and two unmuted.
Just to expedite it, why, why don't I put this out, if, uh, if somebody's watching the livestream, you want to call in for citizens' comments, we'll give it about a minute. Uh, my mobile number's 210-232-4737, and I'll just put you on speaker and we'll, have you talk, so let's give it a minute for people to call in. And then we've got to play the Japanese. 210-232-4737. That's the last one. All right, we've got about another 15 seconds, just in case. Just want to make sure that we give everybody the opportunity to talk if they need to. Okay. Um, so let's close out citizens' comments then. Uh, moving on to, are you, uh, Deborah, you ready to move on?
Um, sure, you're right there, yeah.
We can wait if you need.
How many callers?
We're trying to mute the beat.
How many callers do you have online?
Four, six.
Six.
One of them is Linda Rodriguez, I think, on CPS.
Okay, well, we can give it a second, you just tell us when you're ready.
Our three of them CPS.
Okay, so we're gonna shut down the meeting and restart it? Apparently the heat melted the meeting. It's the heat, it melted everything.
Can we come back to citizens' comments when they get us hooked up?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that she was okay with moving on.
Uh, sure.
And I did put out my phone, I'm, um, I think we've got a couple of things, if you want to keep on working on that, we'll keep on working through the rest, if that's all right? Okay, um, so then the consent, uh, consent agenda. The minutes for June 17th, uh, 2020 specially called council meeting. And, uh, B, minutes for July 1st, 2020 specially called council meeting. Uh, any comments? On either one of those?
And I know, you've already pointed out a couple of, uh, misspellings, but yes, I will fix that.
Okay, thank you. Make sure we got both of those. So the, the two things I had called out were just, uh, on the second one, that, uh, I'm Mayor Protam, and, uh, I have two R's, and Darren. Okay, uh, do I have a motion to approve?
Will we approve the consent agenda?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Discussion and appropriate, uh, action on approving the gas operations and maintenance contract with CPS. Uh, we've got John Gomez from Public Works.
Can you come back to that one maybe, and we can get them back online maybe?
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Thanks, John. Okay, so, um, how do we move past this one, just? We just come back to this one?
Yes, we'll come back to it.
All right, we'll come back to that one then. Okay, discussion, discussion and appropriate action, this is item number eight. Uh, on a petition submitted by Highway 90 Castroville Partners Limited for the annexation of 131.613, 269.407, uh, 14.131, 1 dot 148, lot 2 Walmart store number 4120 dash 00, and 1 dot 018, lot 4 Walmart store number 412 dash 00, acres in the LM Collard survey number 97, abstract 1259, Medina County, also known as Alsatian Oaks Development. Properties located adjacent to Walmart 1151 Highway 90 East Castroville, Texas. Any, um.
Well, and I thought at the time that, uh, someone, uh, Mr. Collins had said they would call in.
Okay.
Oh, okay, uh, he got a message that he's trying to call in, he can't, so maybe we can.
Do you want to have him either, uh, just call him on there and just put him up to the? Okay. While we're waiting on him, can we start the discussion, we'll, oh, there we go.
Well. Hey, sir, I have some technical difficulties, I'm gonna put you on speakerphone, I'm on the speaker, so if you can hear, so, because you're clearly at the item, so we need one second, okay?
All right, hey, Will.
Hi, good afternoon, this is Will Collins.
Hey, Will, thanks for calling in, bearing with our technical difficulties, we appreciate it. All right, you want to, you want to talk about this item?
Are you talking to me?
Yes, so I was quick, if you could talk about the petition for the annexation.
Sure, so this is the, uh, petition to annex the land that's in the ETJ and outside of the ETJ, um, as part of the process per our development agreement.
Perfect, does, anybody have any questions on this, you understand what this is?
I believe this was part of the agreement that we, that we'd already approved, so this is just a formality at this point.
Correct, so we're just accepting them into the ETJ for the, the portions that are not currently.
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion on that, any comments? Okay, uh, do I have a motion?
May I so move that we approve the petition for annexation from Highway 90 Castroville Partners, LQJ.
Second, LQJ.
Okay, I've got a first and a second, uh, second by Councilman Carey. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion passes?
Hey, Will, the motion passed, I think we're good. Thanks for calling in.
Great.
That was fun, thanks.
Thank you all, have a great day.
I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call Linda for CPS.
Okay.
All right, can you hear us?
I can't.
Great, all right, thanks, Linda. Um, so let's move back up to this one. Okay, um, this is discussion and appropriate action on approving the gas operations, maintenance contract with city public services. Um, and the, uh, the staff recommendation is to approve, uh, the gas operations and maintenance contract with CPS. Is there any discussion, any questions? Do you want to talk about this?
Sure, um, this is a, a contract that we have with CPS, uh, on the gas, on the gas side, where they, um, they help us operate and maintain the gas system for the city of Castroville. They help us with any locates, with any repairs, uh, any turn-on, turn-offs, uh, engineering-wise. Majority, majority of things that we, that we need. Um, and, and on the, on the phone were, are some of the CPS folks, right now, like you said, Linda is on the phone right now. Linda Rodriguez, she's our Castroville account manager. Um, the, uh, we're also trying to get the legal, legal representative, Sandra Pulis, uh, she's the, the legal person. And then Michael Fuentes, the director of gas, uh, construction. John Leal's the, uh, director of local government relations. Kevin Matula is the, uh, manager of local government relations. So, these people play a, a big part in, in what we do and, and why we, you know, we're able to provide gas to our customers. So this contract is a, a renewal contract, something we, we feel would like to continue working with CPS, uh, and their folks, because they provide a, a good service to us. They're very responsive, in anything that we do and, and anything that we need, they're, they're very hands-on, and we're, we're too good to be working with.
It's great to have good partners like that.
Exactly.
Now, um, I don't know if you looked into the financial portion of it, um, we looked back at, um, the past few years, um, and really it's less than a cost of living increase on this, um, and it's right in line with what it's been really for the past 10 years. So, uh, I didn't see anything that was out of order with that.
Yes, sir, the, the contract is, is approved as of the form.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
One, one thing I will, I will mention, right now, we're doing month-to-month with CPS, and we want to try and get it to, uh, our fiscal year, so if we can extend it to October, so that we, it can run parallel with our, or in sync with our, our October fiscal year. So then, and, and they agree that they would do that, we'll just change, we'll change the, the language, they will change the language.
So we'll continue month-to-month until October?
Yes, sir.
Right, and we were talking about this earlier, about another contract, um, about just getting all the contracts aligned with the fiscal year, and John caught that, immediately got in touch with them to make sure that we could do that, so I think that's, that's good fiscal sense. Okay.
I would move that we ext- uh, extend this contract, or accept this contract with CPS, with the provision that it begins contractually in October to coincide with our fiscal year.
A second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes?
Thank you, John.
All right, thanks, Linda.
Thanks, Linda.
The motion passed, and we're good to go.
Thank you, Leroy, very much.
Thank you all so much.
Bye-bye.
Have a good day.
Uh, item number nine, discussion and appropriate action on ordinance, amending ordinance 2009 dash 006, council policies and procedures. And, uh, Deborah, you're gonna speak to this?
Sure. Here at, and I'm, I'm sorry, I think it was the last meeting or the meeting before I presented this to y'all, uh, this is just a updated version of your current ordinance. There is a few changes, I think, when Habib was still here with us, that, uh, and, and Cindy can speak to this, that I think there was a, a few changes in the legislature that was put in here, that's, uh, nothing unusual. It is worded just a little bit different than our original one, so it, it, it looks different. But, um, and also in this, um, this would be the time where recently we've been meeting at 5. But, and also in this, this would be the time where recently we've been meeting at 5:00. If y'all wish to make this the regular meeting time, we can place it, I believe in this ordinance and that way I can put it as a regular meeting instead of a special call every time. It still, I think, allows us to, for a special call meeting, have it at any given time we see fit. But our regular meetings would start at 5:00 o'clock.
Are there any functional changes in this? From what I read, it was, it seemed like just wording changes, but there was nothing functionally changed about?
Correct, precisely.
Did we have a E sheet, right, was one of the words being changed?
Well, originally that was in the original ordinance that we sent over because that was basically the time change for the meetings and then also instead of saying "he" as quote the mayor, it would be a "E sheet", but we changed it up, the wording quite a bit when Habib got it and seen it. It needed to be updated on some wording and such, and so I think it's pretty gender-friendly.
Right, right. Overall, it was just a language cleanup. Now, one of the things that was kind of a bigger change was that we really went through and kind of redefined the mayor's role. And that was done, you know, a few months back when there was, you know, different issues that the council was dealing with, so that is one of the, it is not necessarily a change, it just articulates the mayor's role a little bit better. And how that works out. And I think the only other potential substantive change is regarding the agenda and citizens' comments. So there is a requirement by law now that citizen comments must be before any agenda items are actually heard. And so that's been Deborah's standard on her agenda for as long as I've worked for the city of Castroville, so it doesn't work any hardship on the city, but we've actually got it placed into the policy now.
Great. Okay.
We actually don't have to say 5:00 or 7:00 here, the way this is rewritten, because, correct me if I'm wrong, it says council shall adopt resolutions specifying the date and time and location. So we can do that through a resolution, we don't have to go back and change this document each time, the way this is written. Is that correct? I'm on page?
The answer is yes. I mean, we can either do it now and do it in one fell swoop, or we can adopt a resolution, you know, at a future point that just revises the actual time for regularly scheduled meetings.
So if some future council wanted to change it, they could just do that with a resolution, not by changing the whole document?
Yes, sir, that could happen.
Great call. Anything else? No, all right. Do I have a motion?
I'm making a motion that council adopt this new policy.
Policy and procedures. Yes, sir.
Policy and procedures.
And I believe in this also, each of y'all looking at it annually, anyway, if you have any changes you wish to make to where we could, if we needed to change some things.
Okay, and does that, so does that motion need to include that the Exhibit A gets changed, or our regular time changes to 5:00, does that need to include that?
Well, that's already in there, it says that we'll do by resolution, so that's separate from this document.
Okay. It's not done at the same time?
It's a policy matter, policy choice, y'all can do it now, or you can do it by resolution on a, at a different date.
Okay, but a resolution still requires a vote?
Yes.
In the future, yes, sir.
Okay.
So if you want to go ahead and, I guess, state that you want the meetings to be at 5:00 p.m. to get it on the record, we could go ahead and do that tonight.
So you could accept the policy and then also the same motion could include accepting the resolution time change?
We just bring the actual document forward for ratification next council meeting.
Okay. So how did you want to do that?
So we're, right now, I think I'm making a motion that we adopt the document as-is. And then, separate from that is, we will instruct staff to bring a resolution to this next meeting to change the time to be 5:00.
Okay, you don't want to accept that resolution right now?
Can we without it being on the agenda, or not?
There again, like I said, we'd have to bring the document back to ratify at the next meeting.
Either way?
Either way.
In that case, I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes, thank you. Thank you for walking through that muddle.
So are we, and I'm sorry, are we going to go ahead and accept the time change as 5:00 p.m. and bring back a resolution to ratify that, or are we just bringing the resolution back next time?
I think we're just bringing the resolution back next time.
Okay, so you just approved it as presented? Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Does that work? Okay. All right. And then we have an update on code enforcement within the city. We've got Crowe Brooks, Code Enforcement Officer, congratulations.
Yes. And thank you for all the work you've been doing to get where you are. You had a lot of studies, I see.
All right.
Okay.
So what do you have? Do you have something to present, or?
I did send, I did send, send in the agenda report with the.
It should be in your packet, yes.
I was just wondering if there was anything additional? Okay.
So I'm just here to update you on what has been going on with code enforcement. And, well, I need to say that I did pass my exam on the 7th. I'm just, you know, waiting for the official certification in the mail.
Fantastic, great. Well, and I think one of the things that I've had people ask about, I've had a gentleman send in a question about, he's having to deal with his backflow inspection and just concerned about other people. Do we have a, I guess, what is our strategy for doing the code inspection? I mean, do we have like a set schedule of things that you're looking for? Can you talk through your process of how you're looking for code violations and going through and enforcing those?
Okay, well, for me, I do it both ways. Because generally I take a proactive approach towards it. And with that, you know, it's more of an educational, you know, I try to educate the public as to what ordinance they are violating and why, you know, and how they can resolve it. And I also, I do that, you know, when, if someone calls in and makes a complaint, I record the complaint, open the file, and then I go out and investigate. If there is, you know, some legitimacy to it, then I would, I have a process that I follow, you know, with first contact, you know. But because of COVID, I'm not actually ringing doorbells and trying to speak, you know, one-on-one, but I am leaving, you know, doorhangers so that they can call me and then I can, you know, tell them what's the next step and what we need to do. And it has been working pretty well because if you see, I was able to close like 80 cases, you know, so far. The public generally has been, you know, very cooperative and they are receptive to me in the way I'm doing it and that's how I'm able to, but you know, there will be the one or two that, you know, would be like, okay, I'm not, not, you know, not doing it and then I have to, you know, go up for the step, you know, with it, so.
Well, I like your approach too. I mean, this is the way that you act naturally and I think it's very.
Yeah, that's just me.
You're helping people come up, there are people that are violating codes without even realizing it or without remembering it. They forget to do their backflow prevention and so I like the approach of going to them. You're working together with them as neighbors, you're not going after them like they're, you know, hurting your dog or.
Yeah, well, compliance is what we are after. So, you know, if we can do it in a civilized way, that's the way I choose to do it, you know, rather than, you know, I'm going to fine you, you know, and, you know, beating them on the head. That's not, that's not me. So I just adopt it, you know, to where I'm comfortable and I make the people feel comfortable and so they comply.
I like that. And then one of the other things that we had talked about was how do we stay more on top of this so that we're catching some additional areas? I mean, the thing about code compliance is it's really about making sure that people are, there's a reason for people to be in compliance, there's a reason that we have codes. And I know, especially with people that are very, very strict in managing their own processes, other people that aren't quite as strict in managing those processes. So how are we going to stay in front of that and make sure that we are finding those additional ones so that we're not penalizing the responsible ones, we're keeping on top of it, but still following up on the ones who are not?
I think not just Crowe going out, but also other employees like our public workers guys, our meteriers going out, they look at these things every day, they'll come back and report either to Crowe, to John, to Roy or someone, but they're all, even the police as well, the blue, you know, we're here about the blue.
Oh, yeah.
They navigate as well, so anytime any of our employees are out, you see a problem, they'll come back and report it, or me, and then she or whomever will go back and address it. So it's not just Crowe, it's everybody.
Sure.
Yeah, because part of the process is, you know, coordinating with other departments and, you know, other agencies to make sure that, you know, generally, you know, things are in the right, especially for safety, health, you know, and welfare and well-being for everyone, so.
Great, well, thank you. Well, and I do want to just make sure that we're, so it's in addressing specifically with this one about the ones that, I just want to make sure that we have good ways of following up with people, maybe looking at more automated systems. If you think about things like pet registrations, it's easy to forget about your pet registrations, it's easy to forget about your backflow prevention, it's easy to forget about some of these other things. So maybe we can look into some sort of proactive notification of people, just that helps us stay on top of it. I think a lot of people would do it just through reminders.
Yeah, well, what I did, I, now that Public Works has a Facebook page, I created an agenda with different items that I think the public need to be notified of and we have it scheduled to put on the Facebook page at the time that it's relevant so that the public would be aware, okay, you know, you know, this is a season where your grass is going to be growing, you know, growing and so be aware that, you know, you need to cut your grass between this period and, you know, the city, you know, would be keeping on you, you know, to make sure that it is done.
And see, this could tie into the quarterly, monthly newsletter too, because not everybody has internet.
Right.
And that, so that could be something that, you know, the department has to plug in as a, hey, you know, tis the season for this, that or the other.
Yep.
Yeah, because, you know, I have different things, sorry. Yeah.
What's that? And that's what we were talking about with that quarterly report, making sure that that goes out in the, or I think a monthly might even, I don't know if you could keep up with a monthly, but getting something like that out. Maybe we cover certain departments monthly and just do a rotation. Yeah. So we can start looking at that. Do you have any other suggestions for things that we can do to help you be more effective?
The other thing is, well, we don't have much of that stuff, but like, let's say we have like neighborhood watchers and, you know, neighborhood associations, you know, if we can, if we can communicate directly with them and when they have their meeting, they would inform, you know, the residents within that community as to what is expected of them.
That's a good idea.
I was asking if there's any answer to the women's because I know in my neighborhood we don't.
Yeah. I know in my neighborhood we don't, but Westheim, Westheim do have a neighborhood, they have a community that, you know, they meet, they have meetings periodically.
I forget what it's called, but a lot of neighborhoods have a, it's not a Facebook page, but it's a neighborhood.
That next-door thing?
Next-door.
Yeah.
That can be, that can be a mixed bag.
Because it's not just your neighborhood though, because like where I'm at, Medina River West gets pulled in with us.
Yep.
Okay.
I wouldn't know if we want to go down that road, but there was a time when the city tested backflow preventers. We had a city employee certified to do that.
We, now we didn't, we didn't that first, but now we got two of them.
That our service applied for that? Okay. So we should post that up, that's a good idea?
Well, the current ordinance requires the property owner, right?
Well, but we have a charge for that, right?
There was a time when the city was doing it.
So when the city did it, did they charge to do it?
No.
They just did it as a.
Because like in our neighborhood, we were having a lot of busted pipes because the pump coming into our neighborhood was, you were going from 60 PSI to 120 PSI constantly. And it was breaking pipes left and right in houses. So the city came through and they're like, okay, we got to put these on all of our meters to help offset that problem. So the city didn't charge in our neighborhood because of it coming out of the.
The backflow preventer does, it protects our water supply. Because if you lose water pressure, then you could siphon contaminated water into the system. That's why you have these ordinance that do this. And it's a yearly inspection.
Yes.
And you all have a list of people who have sprinkler systems at their yard and you all check that if it comes up on that, then you give them notice that they need to do that.
Yes.
So that needs to go on. I guess then as far as if the city wants to provide that service, I assume that would probably after some thought during the budget cycle because it would, I guess, one thing to ask John, how many man-hours does it take to do a backflow inspection on every property in Castroville and then that's what we would have as part of it. So that would be something if we wanted to do that, we'd talk about in the budget session.
Well, couldn't they also, if somebody wanted to get a backflow prevention test done, they could just call Public Works? You charge them for that, go out just like you would with a plumber? Is that set up like that right now?
No.
So why do you have, why do you have two guys that have, are certified for backflow? Oh, city backflows? Is that what you're saying? Is it a city policy that we check backflows annually, or is that a state policy or?
State.
I'm sorry?
State.
State policy?
State mandates that they be installed. I don't, I don't think testing is mandated, is it?
It needs to be installed and it needs to be, it needs to be tested annually
Really?
by a certified tester.
Wow, did not know that.
So, right now, what has been happening, we notify the people that they're due to, for the annual tests and they have to get a certified plumber, a plumber that's certified in backflow preventive.
Then along with, you know, our, I guess, licensure of sprinkler systems, there should be a requirement that they submit an annual test result to the city. I mean, that's just.
If it's connected to backflow preventive, yes.
If you've got a sprinkler system operating on municipal water, then you need to submit an inspection report annually.
And a lot of the sprinkler guys do, they send a copy not only to the homeowner, but to the city as well, that way.
Do we have a method for documenting the last time that it was done and going back and proactively reaching out and making sure that, like?
Yes, yeah.
Is that done in our works?
Yeah, Public Works has, we have a record.
I'm already doing it, that's great.
Thanks. Okay.
I think the concern from that constituent was that we're not, we're not picking up all the sprinkler systems or the backflows in the city. Wasn't that right, Darren?
So, yeah, what it said on there, I'm writing on the back, that's why you can find it. So, in compliance, my concern is that we have numerous citizens with sprinkler systems that are not registered with the city for inspection. sprinkler systems that are not registered with the city for inspection. So, yeah, that is, because he doesn't believe that they're registered with the city. How do we go back, because you have to pull a permit to install a sprinkler system, don't you?
You should.
You should.
So do we have just?
You should.
Well, like what you had said with the, with the meter readers, just double checking if they see that, do they just jot it down? Is there, is that happening right now, or is that just an idea for how we can do that?
It's an idea of how we can do that.
Okay.
You could go back and verify those.
Well, I think that if you just look at as they're walking, because they're walking through and checking all the meters, I think that what we should do for the citizens potentially is to set up something that demonstrates what are all of the codes that we're looking for, how do we track it, how do we stay on top of it? And it's really just being responsible about following up with these.
Yeah.
I agree. And again, on this particular one, it's for the public health, it's, there's a need.
Oh, it's important.
Yeah, it's, it's real hard to spot this, because sometimes you just have to be nearby when the, when the sprinkler system's working, but it's almost like some type of a plan where you actually have a list of those properties that have a meter registered. You know, these, a lot of sprinkler systems were installed 20 years ago, and that wasn't a criteria then, so.
That would be neat.
Yeah. So, but it's, but you do need to bring it in compliance in the first, and you probably need a backflow preventer.
Well, again, this is.
How can you state your address for the record?
I think this, this goes back to public information.
I haven't adjusted yet for the record.
I mean, if, if people have sprinkler systems that don't have preventers installed because they weren't required at the time, they need to be advised that it's required now, get that thing installed, so that's not, it shouldn't be hard. I mean, information, as you said, education is part of, is part of your nature.
Because I know when we first started with this backflow preventer, you know, we actually went through the whole city from the satellite and see who actually has swimming pools in their yard. And then, you know, and then we went back and we looked into the Medina card to see if they were registered, you know, if they were paying the taxes, you know, accordingly. And that's how we, we started mapping out, you know, who, who needed it. And then we took into consideration the restaurants that, you know, had, you know, those soda machines and stuff like that. And so we started, you know, then we, we looked into the nursing homes, and so we, that's how we started adding, you know, the names of the addresses that, that needed the backflow preventer.
I'm sorry, I was just going to say, we make light of this just because, you know, it's, I like the way that you're very friendly about it, we make light about some of the things, but it really is a serious issue, and we do need to stay on top of that. So I don't want anybody to think like we don't feel like it's important. And so that's, that's the only reason that I would state something about, we should just make sure that we're staying on top of that. Thank you for what you're doing.
Yeah, yeah, we, we know that it's important, and we have been, you know, tracking and getting this stuff together and informing the residents, you know, who, you know, finding out definitely who has it and who doesn't have it, and letting them know, well, they need to have it, and, and this is a procedure.
And just as a, from lessons learned, for those that have sprinkler systems that were put in 20 years ago, do an FYI, not a, you're in violation.
Right.
We don't need a repeat of blowing up John's phone. And Leroy's phone.
Well, and that's one of the reasons that I really like her, is Coral is very, very good.
Oh, yeah, she is, it's just the wrong hanger was used, is that a violation, instead of a, hey?
An information.
Just FYI, new ordinance, that kind of thing. That way, like I said, it keeps from their phones blowing up.
All right, any else on that?
No, I don't think so. Thank you.
Appreciate the.
Thank you, Ms. Bruce.
All right, item number 11, discussion and appropriate action on a resolution authorizing the submission of an application for financial assistance with the United States Department of Agriculture Community Facilities Direct Loan Program and authorizing signatures, signatures for all documents relating to the USDA Community Facilities Direct Program. David Kilbuck.
Hey, good afternoon, council. This won't be as long as the budget meeting. I, I had mentioned to you a couple of times that we're going to seek help to build new hangars at our facility. We're seeking assistance through the USDA Office of Rural Development Community Direct Loan to construct a new set of hangars. The city's airport hangar capacity, we're at full capacity, and we're not meeting the need and the demand for growth. The lack of hangars limit the city's airport to grow and attract new airport tenants. Hangars serve as an important revenue generator for the airport to sustain operations. The USDA Office of Rural Development is seeking a partnership with us and the airport to improve aviation infrastructure. The USDA Office of Rural Development has invited Castroville Municipal Airport to participate in the Community Direct Loan Program. As required by the USDA, the city has initiated an environmental review and pre-architectural report to support the completion of the project. They're offering a 2.25% loan on a 40-year note, direct for the airport account. It's the lowest interest rate that the USDA has offered in years. They expect it to maybe go down another point this month or next month. Only revenue generated from the hangar being built will cover the cost of the loan. The proposed hangar totals just under $600,000. The revenue which is projected to be generated from the addition of this hangar will more than cover the terms of the note. The approximate payments of the note will be $2,055 a month. First payment for the loan can be deferred up to 12 months after completion of the project. There's no prepayment penalty for paying off the loan prior to the maturity date. This project will generate revenue to help sustain airport operations. There's a hangar shortage throughout the entire region, so this is going to definitely help us. The city's airport does not have enough hangars to meet our demand. Right now, we have 30 on the waiting list, and I get calls weekly to add. Based on the need, this project poses little to no risk to the city. We're seeking letters of support for this project from our state and federal representatives. A public meeting will be held to discuss this project in detail as part of the USDA requirements. And if approved, we expect to complete the formal application and completion of the hangar in late fall, early winter of this year. Any questions?
Councilman Schirr.
No questions.
Okay.
Did they approach us on this loan, or did we approach them?
It was a dual approaching. The city of Pleasanton actually introduced this to me.
Who did?
The city of Pleasanton Airport, J.J. Roberts, and told me about this program and who they used to go through it. So I went to the same people, and they said, absolutely, we didn't know you were interested.
So we approached them?
Yes, sir. Yep, go ahead.
The hangar, the proposed hangar has nine new stalls, is that correct?
Yes, sir, eight, eight tee hangars, which are individuals, and one business hangar.
So you have 30, 30 people on the waiting list, and can we double this?
That, so right now, this is a preliminary, let's see if it works. The USDA is very interested in continuing to work with us, and this will be kind of a boilerplate, being that we're the first city-owned airport to do this. So if we can, we will immediately go for the next.
Does this sound like a win-win?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
No, I have no questions.
You, you mentioned the city of Pleasanton, you, somebody you knew there contacted you. Were they not, are you, the thing you just mentioned, that we're the first city?
City-owned.
To do this. City-owned airport, is their airport not city-owned?
Their airport became city-owned as a, not as a deeded restriction via the federal government. We are federally obligated, they receive money, but, because they have it, but we were deeded this airport to maintain an airport, and we are the ball for this portion.
So we're the first deeded airport?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I understand that, thank you.
So to be clear, the cost to, not the airport, but to the city is?
Zero.
Thank you. And then the liability to the citizens?
Zero.
Okay. And my last question is, why did it take us so long? No, no, I think this is a really good, so the recommendation is recommend approval of resolution for staff to continue with USDA direct loan requirements. Do you have a motion?
I made a motion that we approve the resolution of the city council, and the city Castroville authorizes the submission of the application for the financial assistance with the United States Department of Agriculture Community Facilities Direct Loan Program and authorizes signatures for all documents related to the USDA Community Facilities Direct Program.
Did you catch all that? Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Great, all right, thank you.
Give somebody else a chance.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right, thanks, David.
Thank you.
All right, hey, the next one's me. Okay, so discussion on process for updating the city thoroughfare plan with a committee of stakeholders, including the county, school district, and Tech Dot. So I am coming into this after a whole lot of work has been done. Councilman Carey's been doing a lot of work on this. I know that Arnie Delazi with CADC has been doing a lot of stuff on this. We've had a lot of people that have been involved with it, traffic studies that have been done, really, over the last couple of years. There's a lot of people that have been paying a lot of attention to this, and especially all of us as we drive out and drive back in are noticing the extreme differences with the, with the traffic patterns. So in talking to, to Tech Dot, it's, we're not, we have to look at all of the, the things that are going on around the entire neighborhood, entire, around the entire city. So it's what we were, we had approached, do we approach?
I do believe that Castroville initiated a meeting six months ago, where we had Tech Dot, we had Honda, we had the county personnel, we had, we have Judge Schuhart available, there are probably 12 people in the room. And we talked about the limitations that Tech Dot has in that we are not a sizable enough community to, I forget the term, but there's a task force or a fund that is, that is available if we were a larger community.
And you're talking about the county being over 50,000 people, right?
Yes, and so we don't get, we don't get a district, basically. So we can look at various options. One of, one of the problems we have was that the light sequencing in Castroville is not, not coordinated, so that we, you can either stop at every light as you're driving through town, and every time a light stops Highway 90 to let six cars come out of the side street, you back up 50 cars on Highway 90, and they're going zero miles an hour. And it takes some time to get back up to speed, and oftentimes by that time, they're hitting another light. So sequencing the lights would be, would be a good move for Castroville. Also, looking at intersecting highways like 471, and, you know, you may get five cars coming down 471, they'll trigger the light till light stops, 25, 30 cars back up on Highway 90. So if there were alternate routes that those vehicles could take to, to get to and from their destinations without going through that light, that would be a plus. And unfortunately, going through neighborhoods like Country Village is one of those options for the people who live there, but that's, you know, that's, those are public streets and the public's going to use them. So considering, and, and we have sat down a couple of times over the past decade and looked at possible relief routes around the perimeter of the city, and of course, that means somebody's got to buy real estate, or we have to establish at least a master plan, a thoroughfare plan. And I think at our last meeting, our instructions from Tech Dot at least was, put a line on paper, you know, so that when somebody comes in like Alsatian Oaks and says, hey, we want to do development here, we can say, that's great, we need you to allow us to move traffic from point A to point B. And so we've been working on that with, with respect, as directed by this, this council a month or so ago. And I think we've got, he's got a line on paper, I think he's, he was preparing to bring that to us real soon. So, but essentially, we need to adopt that, get that in the hands of our development office, so that when somebody comes in with a plan for a subdivision, we can say, that's great, can you get traffic from here to here for us? And, and that's our plan, and you're going to get a whole lot more reception in the city of Castroville if you do. So it, it's just having something in the hands of our developer, development office that can be translated to future opportunities to develop land around Castroville. So there's, there's a lot of things going on there. Unfortunately, because of the residential occupation around Castroville, the subdivisions around the county, around the city, the options for those routes are dwindling quickly. I mean, 10 years ago, I looked at this when I was on Mayor Lee's master plan task force, and we had several options then, a couple of those are gone now. So, you know, Westheim would have, would have occupied one of those spaces, Alsatian Oaks occupies one of those spaces, and that's only going to get worse. So I think ASAP, we need to get that thoroughfare plan through this council and into the hands of the development office.
And we really need to do this in coordination with, with key stakeholders. And when I talk about.
Absolutely.
Part of this, you know, part of it is internal in Castroville. There are people that live here, that work here, that own businesses, that have vested interest in making sure that people can get to, like with business owners, making sure that they can get to their businesses, making sure that they still have that traffic going through so that they're not losing money because we've routed everybody around. So that's definitely a consideration. There's also a consideration for where are the new schools going? You've got to have a concentration of all of the.
Heavy traffic.
Heavy traffic, kids going to school at key times. You notice during the school year, aside from this year, you've always got those rush hours really very much around that, that school time. It's working with the county, it's working with, looking at where the, the new development is going on, so that we can look at it very holistically. What we looked at initially was just the northeast quadrant, because of all of the stuff that's coming in with Alsatian Oaks, we've got country, village estates, there's some growth going on there, but I think that we would be remiss if we didn't look a little bit around there, because there are feeder streets. You've got, you've got Lower Lacoste, you've got 471, and you've got some other things that are going around there that, that traffic would possibly increase as well. So I think that we need to take a look at it very holistically and to, to continue to go through that. So I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of the direction that we were going with this. We really need to, I think, next steps is defining exactly who the key stakeholders are and working through that portion, and just continuing to get it to a point where we can actually bring something back to council and make a recommendation. Now, doing the traffic study, there's a couple of different elements to it. One is putting the lines on the paper. The other part is, so that we don't have to repeat the entire process all over again, it is putting the lines on a paper for a very specific reason, and then developing a model that can then change as situations around us change. So if you've got a new thousand-home development up on, you know, 471 towards Rio Medina, how does that affect our traffic patterns? If there's something big that's going on, you know, down Lower Lacoste, how does that affect our traffic patterns? So without that model, and that model is not cheap, but it is the foundation of how do we move forward and not have to recreate the wheel every single time? It becomes something that we can actually build off of. So discussion.
Well, I think you, you included the school district, and that is something that was not accomplished in that first meeting. Because they have got some pretty impressive demographics, and they, they know where their growth is. They're planning a decade ahead, and we certainly should get that, that participation in this process.
And they know where their schools are going, so when you look at a new development, again, the reason for the model, you've got a new school that goes in, you've got a new subdivision that goes in, and how do those two match up?
Well, and they're already looking at the new, the second Medina Valley High School also, so that ties in, not necessarily with the new housing development, but.
Completely, yes. That changes traffic patterns.
Yep.
And they can then, if we have the model, then they can say, all right, so once we do this, this is how the traffic patterns are going to change during these times, because they know where people are coming from. Yeah.
They aren't always on top of that. I know that a few weeks back, the engineer for the school district took a plan to Commissioner's Court, and Commissioner's Court turned him down because he did not consider adequate traffic flow and to, to and from the schools, because they're going to have an elementary school, middle school, and a high school all basically on the same block.
Yes.
And so, and they have one, one main. And so, and they had one, one main artery in and out that just wasn't going to work.
Had lived in a place.
Too many people, too many different directions on the same, same street. So, yeah, we, that awareness needs to be raised across the board, not, not just here.
All right. Councilwoman Martinez, anything else?
No, sir.
Councilman King?
As you said, this, this is going to be expensive based on the number I heard floating around. It is, as bad as it is in Castroville, everything west of Castroville, it's worse. And I mean, we're talking about people west of Castroville, in Medina County, it takes them 30 minutes to make it through town.
Just to make it through Castroville, yes.
Just to make it to Castroville. It doubles the commute. So when we move forward on this, I guess, Paul, have you talked to the county about sharing the cost of this thing? In reality, these streets aren't going to, these thoroughfares are not going to go through Castroville, they're going to go through the county.
They're in the county, yeah, the county's on board with it. We had, we had Commissioner Senter there and the, and the judge, county judge there, and they were definitely interested in the process. And of course, they know that there's, nothing happens without a dollar. So there are thoroughfares that the county already has that can be widened and improved that would relieve a lot of the traffic north and west of here, and that's certainly on their list.
And I know after the census that we expect that Eden County will be able to join the San Antonio IPO, the Metropolitan Planning Station. That's who uses major funding to, because they realize that getting out of San Antonio, you've got to go through these other areas also. So that's all part of it. But I do think that we should have started this process five years ago, so like, I think everybody's sitting here today, we do need to move forward. So I guess right now, are you, are you saying we're going to continue these meetings and tomorrow call Larry again and Chris and start meeting with them? Or what's, what's the step forward with this?
So we met up with, with Russell over at Respec, and he had presented what former Mayor Santley had asked him to look at, which was just the northeast quadrant. But if you do just the northeast quadrant, you're missing the bigger picture, you're missing the coordination with the school district. So really, this is bringing it forth to make sure that people were aware of it. Next step from here really is developing our list of stakeholders to make sure that we are not missing any of the key stakeholders, and that would include neighboring cities that would be affected by this as well, so that we've got a good, solid, well-rounded approach.
Yeah, I think the directive from the meeting months ago was, you need, you need a plan. And, and so that was really our first objective, was to put that line on, put that line on a map. And, and once we have a plan, then we can start engaging and, and enlisting the help of others to, to participate in or refine that plan. But, yeah, we need to just basically here and say, let's continue and move forward. And I'm happy to be a participant in that. The, I think the people at TechDOT seem very encouraged and very excited about this. They knew that they don't have the funds to do it, because we're not a big enough community for them to do that. But the county, the county can, the school district can, and already has, they have had a lot of demographic work already done. And so if we can get a cooperation between those, and we may have to become the instigator, the, the point of the spear here, and it just requires that we decide to do that.
So it sounds like what you're saying, and Councilman Schuhart, I'll be with you just a second, I forgot about you, I promise.
It's all right. It's a mouthful.
So what you're saying is recommendation would be to look at, you mentioned coordinating the traffic-
Synchronizing.
Synchronizing the traffic lights, maybe looking at doing some improvements to Old Highway 90 to, to get some of that traffic.
There was also suggestions to use alternate routes. We have traffic that comes up Lower Lacoste, or, yeah, Lower Lacoste Road, and hits that light and triggers that light, and you may have two cars coming up Lower Lacoste Road that stops traffic on Highway 90. So if we were to turn that first block by semis, for instance, into a south only, one-way, and make the traffic coming up the road turn up Old Highway 90 and enter, you know, half mile up the road with a, with an emerging lane, you know, things like that. There's all kinds, there's all kind of traffic, I think Russell was the one that suggested that, all kind of traffic options that are available to us. Just need to think about them and decide to initiate them, and I think it'll work.
So we put down kind of our low hanging fruit, the things that we can accomplish? Because we're not going to, the thoroughfare plan, like the massive thing of traffic shaping, traffic routing, we're not going to achieve overnight. There are some quick wins that we could do, so I think what you're saying is that we go for those quick wins.
Yeah. Our options for the thoroughfare plan are, are, are very limited and getting smaller. So we really need to just get that line on a map and get it in the hands of, of the city as an official document.
Councilman Schuhart?
I don't know what to add to that. I agree with all of y'all. These kind of projects usually move at a snail's pace for some reason, but that northeast quadrant is just unbelievable. Like, like Councilman Kerry said, the options are getting less because things change. A subdivision comes in, where a proposed road maybe was in the, in the mix at some point. I know one of them, north of my family's property, did that. Proposed highway back from Petranca Road to Highway 90 has already changed because there's subdivisions on both sides of Microsoft being built as we speak, you know? And I don't know if you've tried to get up Petranca Road and 211 lately, but when you go 90 east and get off on 211 and try to go north?
You can't turn left.
Holy smoke.
Yeah, that's where my sister lives.
You've got, you've got to sit there a while, and what people are doing, they're turning to the right to go, get on Masterson Road, and then they're making a U-turn to get back on because of the traffic has to yield to them once they get on Masterson Road slash 211. It's just unbelievable what people are doing to try to commute. Yeah, I agree with everything y'all are saying. I just, like, like Councilman King said, what's our next step? You know, where do we go from here? We just can't send all it and forget about it, and, and it's, it's something that not just this council needs to be involved with, it's a county and a state thing.
Speaking of low hanging fruit, because of the layout that has been proposed for Alsatian Oaks, they have a through street that is, at this point, planned to terminate in a westerly direction at their, at their boundary. It's not far from there to 471 north. And so if, if we were, and that's in the county, so we, we can't do anything about it. But if we were to approach the county, that would be a, a major coup, would be to secure that roadway, that right-of-way from Alsatian Oaks, or just get the plan on a piece of paper from Alsatian Oaks to 471, so that when somebody comes in and wants to expand in that area, they would be pretty much obligated to afford a thoroughfare for, for major traffic through that area, so.
So I think our next step to get this moving along quickly is meeting up with the school district, with the county, ourselves, and working with Respec to put together kind of a high-level proposal on that, and then start going through that process. Because I think that we've got to get that high-level proposal based on what we know right now.
Well, the county's going to have to buy in right away, because our proposed alternate route is-
So county.
-all in the county.
Yep. So I think if we start with that, get everybody on board with that, bring it back.
I think it's got to start there, yes, sir.
Yeah. I agree. I don't know if we do that through public hearings or through, I think we start with-
So I'm going to jump in here.
Please.
And, and so one of the first things that y'all do after y'all meet and kind of get a general consensus on, on what's next is make sure that all the, the stakeholders that are paying money enter into an, you know, an interlocal agreement as to what that division is going to be, get that, get that approved, and then that keeps moving forward. And then when you actually get down to adoption of it, it, it will be a series of public hearings, you know, receive citizen comment, you know, kind of a, for lack of a better term, you'll have a couple of show and tells, you know, this is what we're thinking, folks. You'll actually have the official designated public hearing, and then you move forward to adoption of the actual plan itself.
Yeah, I was going to say, we, we actually have one. We, last one we approved was probably about four or five years ago, and we had public hearings. So there's one of the books now. It did not include an alternate route, because people don't want to talk about that back then. But it, it is.
It may be time.
It does, it is time. There, yeah, there's no doubt it is time. But, and that's the one, Paul, I think we're talking about the basic documents to go off of and then add on to that. So, yes, but I think it's, I would agree with you even if we follow with this.
And I think that we engage through CADC, through the chamber, and through the, the known stakeholders that, that this would impact. I think that we start making sure that they're involved with it, they understand what we're doing, they can make suggestions so that it's not-
Absolutely.
-overly impacting them, and then we can move forward, you know, as, as needed. Right. Okay.
So I said, I suspect of what needs to come out of this meeting today, and what's this agenda item is basically just a determination of this panel to move forward. It's just, let's, let's schedule a, a meeting with the county, I think is the next step, and get, and make sure that they know we're, we're moving forward and get their buy-in, and of course, including the school district, and that would be excellent. And then TechDOT, you've got the list here.
Yep.
So, you scheduled another meeting?
Perfect.
Not, not directed, I'm getting a little wrong there.
I'm not sure what this is.
Okay. You look like, you look like you were trying to figure out what it is you were going to have to do next, so.
It's okay.
So we don't have any decisions to make, we just wanted to make sure that we updated, make sure that we're going in the right way, and see if you had any suggestions or input on that. So we'll just continue that and move it forward quickly.
Okay. Well, that's, I guess we need to pick a date and invite people and see what happens.
Perfect. Okay. Then, number 13, discussion on generating the monthly quarterly newsletter.
Yes.
Let's see. Oh, so, sorry. Deborah gave me some notes, and that's for the next item. Okay. I'm like, I don't think we have to go into executive decision. Okay, so who is talking about the newsletter?
This is one that the mayor, or former mayor had been on the agenda.
Yep.
And so that decision, and so I guess decide whether we want to do either monthly or quarterly.
I think it's a great idea. Sorry.
Go ahead.
She was pointing at something else.
He didn't have his microphone up.
Oh, gotcha. So go ahead and say it again.
I mean, what would you prefer, monthly or quarterly?
I think it's a great idea to do the newsletters. I think it's important for council to be aware of what's going on, also for sharing that with, with the community. If you look at what we talked about earlier with the code enforcement, when you talk about, and I, I think there might be two different versions of that, if we're looking at new development that's going on, that we can talk about, let people know about it early so that they can be aware of what's going on in the city. If they can't, at least make us aware so that we can proactively discuss with, with the people that live here once we can, and just make sure, sure that we're aware of it early, and just look through the different departments. From what I heard, the one, there was one that was put out, was it last year or the year before, that was pretty handy with the amount of details was?
Well, it used to be every month.
Yeah, every month.
In the utility bill, I think the library helped it together back then.
Yeah, the librarian.
It's just a single page front and back, and they talk about, some of the information never changed, it was just to your council members or things like that, phone numbers they can call. But then there was also, I remember one time it was about how much trash, you know, how much debris you could put out, and when you can put debris out. And then, again, this topic of the whole back, the backflow preventers and why it's needed. So I think, to me, I think it needs to be monthly. There's, we don't have a newspaper anymore that, that used to get this information out, because, you know, again, the one from, from the ambul is, is, it's still a good newspaper for us, but it's limiting what they're doing, because they've had to, they've had to shrink their thing, because in fact, at this time with the, with their advertising going down, you have to put less paper there. So I think for us to step forward and just re-initiate that monthly newsletter, that I guess it was about three years ago, they got canceled. And, and it can't be that expensive to put that together. I mean, it was really just nothing to watch, see, just a simple front and back.
And if you have departments that have to put it together for each one of their departments, you know, I think it might be a good idea to do like a, maybe a quarterly calendar for things that are going on once we can actually do things again in the city. So, you know, when the, the different celebrations go on so that people can know about it, maybe one side is with that, the other side would be key contact information for all the different departments, the different Facebook pages, the different website locations as like one double-sided sheet, and then the other would be department updates. And maybe the departments are only doing once a quarter update, but you have, you rotate the department, so every month you've got something new coming out, especially anything that's timely around, you know, the sprinklers are going to start going off in late spring, so make sure that you get that backflow prevention, so any of the things that would affect, that are in a timely fashion.
And we used to do that. We would also put in, say, springtime came around, we'd say, don't forget to have your pets vaccinated.
Yep.
That monthly reading, our newsletter would be on that, and just maybe tips, that type of thing. I will say, at one point, the newsletter got to where it had so many pages-
Yes.
-it became a problem.
Oh, wow.
And, yeah, it, because our, our folding machine only does like four pages, and it got to where it was four and five and six.
Yeah.
And we, we had to hand-stuff them, and so it got to be a problem. And it kind of got, I won't say by the wayside, but then we had staff changes, not necessarily in the library, but in other areas here, and they, it kind of fell off the radar. And then a lot of times, we did have people come in and they never even read it. They would hand us back the bill with it in there, and that became discouraging, and so we were trying to figure out a way to have, and there were some people that read it all the time, and kept it, and was faithful, but then there was a lot of them that they never even, we tried to give it back to them and they wouldn't do it.
I think that a lot of that pressure can be relieved by the fact that we are, there are a lot of people who look at the city website and Facebook page, and a lot of that information can be relayed that way. I would think that we're looking at more critical stuff, like, like informing people about the backflow preventers.
Or power's out. I was always had that as a, with the quick reference thing, because if the power's out, my internet's not going to be on. So I would always have that, that piece of paper handy and like, oh, here's the-
Who do you call?
-number I need to call and see, hey, got a reported outage, or what's going on, I think.
But I would also suggest that as a practical process here is that the mayor pro temp be the kind of clearinghouse for many of us that have issues, and then you can communicate that to the city and, and, you know, because you don't want to have 16 different articles from 16 different people that, that you want to try to get out and have a four-page newsletter. So, so just from a practical aspect, practical point of view, we need to have somebody be the clearinghouse for any concerns, and it had to be that.
What I'm told, yeah.
Remember, right, also, not this year, because everything got canceled this year, but for instance, people, different nonprofit groups could put an insert into the utility bill. It, it was restrictions on how that was.
We, there were certain things that we allowed in there, but we, we did not, and this doesn't, I don't want to sound bad, but because if we opened it up, we had to allow, and I'll say this, we would have to allow everyone.
Then it would be five pages again.
And that's why we kept it, we, we kept it very restrictive-
Right.
-because of the fact that, and that's not to say when you start a newsletter now, we can put a little blurb in there that somebody's having a festival or something of that nature, but unless it pertained really to our departments, say the library was having camps or something-
Yeah.
-because they had to come and stuff it, you know, that's, we limited it very much, so.
Well, and the other, the other thing is, I'm, I'm just going to, when you said five pages, the first thing I thought is that people were using it as basically a free advertising service, which we have to make sure that we prevent, so.
I think that if you do city events, things that are going on in the city, maybe we can do it like that. And this would be, like specifically, events that are designed for the public, not-
Like at the park, they would always advertise Boo Bash-
Yeah.
-in, in October. That would always be a small, little thing, and a little blurb, like a bullet of, okay, they're going to have trunk or treats, they're going to have this, they're going to have that, from this time to this time. So they would just have little blurbs for, for city, you know, and like this, whatever the annual thing that they hold, held up, Koenig Park there, just little blurbs. That way, it gets out city of things, but yet it also plugged in what each department wanted people to know about, that kind of stuff, so.
Yeah, we're looking at every month, looking for a calendar idea, you know, if you did that on the side, you show these different festivals that are coming up, or the Boo Bash, or the citywide garage, yard sale, things like that, so those are, and again, you have to be restrictive what you put on that, but community-related, something like to be restrictive what you put on that, but community-related, something like that.
So August tends to be the first one that you would want to put out as our next bill?
I'd say yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we limit it to the size that we can actually do.
I'd say we could short and sweeten.
Yeah.
Especially the first one, they kind of just grow it depending on how those.
It's not like there's any big events going on right now, because there's not. So we could just look at, you know, like the backflow preventer checks, sprinklers.
Yeah. It's a good time to live and learn.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we used to, we would put in, they would choose, like I said, the code enforcement officer would choose a certain thing. And we'd put that in there and just say, this is, you know, high grass, if it was raining or something of that nature. And just, you know, the points of what our ordinance said, you know, far as to give them an idea. And it was, you know, we, I know the librarian right now that we have, she helped with it through two library directors. And so she's well aware of how to set it up and how it's set up in the computer. So.
Yeah. And another, another thing we may already need to start looking at is the citywide yard sale is normally first weekend in November. So we need to start, city needs to start looking at that, if they're gonna authorize that or not.
Definitely August tends to be the first one in there. So thank you for that.
And the other one that we need to notify people, it gives our new, the trash recycle.
The bulk pickup now is every month.
There was a list.
We'll get information from waste management to hand out to them. So.
Right. Because I know some of that stuff that's recycled, my recollection is like a cereal box is not recyclable because of the way it's printed, whereas, so those are things that we have to let the citizens know.
Or put out there regarding the handicap now, sticker that they can put on handicap individuals' garbage cans. And then the garbage, the garbage guys will walk up, retrieve their garbage can, take it and then bring it back up for them. Oh, great.
Something that they're taking on a case-by-case basis is, we want to add that conversation with Chris.
But just...
Yeah. Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Is that all right? Okay. Anybody else? All right. So now it is 6:20. We're gonna go into executive session. And that is pursuant to the Texas government code, section 551.071, entitled, "Consultation with Attorney. City Council shall convene in executive session to consult with the city attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer or a matter in which the city attorney, under the state barter's rules of conduct, is required to disclose confidentially to city council as follows." And is Rebecca Ann Parker versus City of Castroville, cause number 19-03-25655-CV.
I got T mode, seventy miles an hour, my big old people from, broke three lips, shut them off road brakes, took a ride, I got two bolted in my head.
Yeah.
All that means is now I'm, uh, I'm, uh, I'm just, 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 uh, Um, this guy goes serving justice. Policy. Which I think my character changed that. One time he said, it did. Casualty, little casualties. It's a big deal, right? Very important. It's about your free. Free. Very much. The day after. Chief has. He came out. Yeah. I did. Um, part of the paper. That's on. Oh, I can't call. That's why it's key. What they're doing is they're saying. They have to make money. Which is pretty bad. Something. Part of the. I just started doing that. That's what they did. Just keep the peace I can count on somebody. She saw these lots of. Small people. That's the question. I'm not a child here. Also, for.
Ta-da. Morning. You said it, baby. Do you have me?
Yes, sir.
Does he? Do you have a cake?
About, no. Yeah. No, we've been exactly seven. We've been little babies.
They were. And they haven't been. They haven't been. Yeah.
It's all there waiting on us though.
I don't keep that working. Was he driving you nuts? Did you see where the horse?
All right. So we are reconvening, reconvening in open session at six forty-one. Okay. Item number sixteen. Consider possible action or give direction on caption items legally discussed in executive session. There's no action. Okay, easy. All right, so then. Number seventeen. So these are updates on safety measures for city staff and public during the COVID-19 pandemic. So I'd ask everyone to put this on for every council meeting as we go through this. We don't have to draw this out. We can be really kind of quick about it. So the governor's latest orders require that for the most part gatherings of over ten people have to have in, in the city, they have to have the mayor or mayor pro tem's actual sign off on it if they don't fall within the exception process. And outside, you know, with the county, county judge. So I wanted to talk about any of the ones that we're looking at right now. Some of the things that are coming up. I want to make sure that I'm not making any of these in a, in a box. So just to let you know, the things that we are looking at right now are, we have a graduation party at Kennick Park this coming weekend.
You said more than ten?
More than ten people. So previously it was a hundred.
Wow.
Now it's more than ten people. And the restrictions are really, they're quite confusing. They don't totally make sense, but getting a lot more familiar. Thank you for all your help with that. So try to understand exactly what fits inside of that. So the way that we're approaching this is really mostly you can do, as long as people are limiting how many people are going to it, they're taking the protect, the correct protective measures, masks and hygiene and limiting like spacing and occupancy. Where the default is to help them stay safe. We don't want a breakout in Casterville. We don't want to drive up those numbers. So it's really, my approach has been to work with the people that are doing this. I've reached out to, really, we have three different places that can, that can house this. Talking to some folks with the stuff going on at Kennick Park. I reached out to the event center right next to us and then also speaking with, with a hotel. So just working through those to make sure that if they've got any of those, we're walking through it. And I wanted to give you updates on it. So the ones that we're looking at right now, one this weekend, they're going to be definitely less than the fifty percent capacity, which is the closest that I can tell. I know seventy-five with restaurants, but with events, it's more like fifty.
Right.
They're going to be well under that. Kennick Park is a big place and they are very meticulous. They're following the CDC directions on hygiene and distancing and mandatory masks. And I believe that what they have right now actually falls within the governor's orders. So with that, there's no approval needed.
I just had a couple of observations that I sent you in regarding to that one because it lists to where, you know, we got people coming from Casterville, Lacoste, Rio Medina and Hondo.
Right.
Hondo is one of our epicenters for the county. In that it's very, you know, they said that they'll have some continuously cleaning the restrooms, but there was no mention about the tables inside or outside to include the chairs people are going to be sitting in. Another thing is, is they got to understand household means under the same roof.
Yep.
Just because aunt, uncle, this, that and the other are there does not mean, oh, no.
Right.
You still got to have that six feet. And then just something I recommended was, what is their contingency? Because it's already happening on day to day. I see it outside all the time. Those that don't want to comply with wearing the face covering and/or staying the six feet apart. What is their contingency plan to handle that? Because it will need to be handled immediately because like you said, we don't need to have.
It is mandatory, right?
An explosion here in Casterville.
Yep.
It's just some things that I, I sent to you just specifically.
Perfect.
As far as observations, looking at the contingency side of it.
And I think that, you know, one of the things that I'm encouraging is to have them bring in security as enforcement.
I worked one Saturday morning at Serendos.
Great.
My biggest job was kids walk in with a mask on as soon as they got in. They take them off on hoods. I think, gosh, you can't do that. Of course, now we sit down with fifty tables and they're not six feet apart. They're even breaking the mask if you're on.
Correct.
So really. There's a lot of holes.
And that's why I was asking the questions because, you know, it brings up about cleaning up the restrooms, but not at tables and chairs.
Right.
And like I said, it, we could be, you know, brother, sister, but we don't live in the same household. But the families around here, I know they're really close and everything. Come up and give a big hug.
Mm-hmm.
No.
Don't do that, yeah.
Just wave hi, you know?
Well, the good thing in Hondo is it's mostly relegated to prisoners, guards and the. Yeah, I know. But there's, you know, no matter what, there, there is, there is disease out there and there's cross contamination. And so what we have, I, I met up with them on multiple occasions on doing this. And I would encourage you, if you know of anybody that's doing this, you do the same thing. For the most part, I've been handling these and Councilwoman Martinez has been doing that as well. She's been really leading on all that COVID-19 stuff. And so thank you for all of that and we'll definitely get that off.
Yeah. It's something to cover them as well as the city.
Yep.
Because, I mean, like I said, it only takes one. And I see it every day, people trying to come in business establishments here in town without face covering on. It's like, whoa, wait a minute, no, no.
Right.
It don't work like that. And like chief said, they'll come in the door with it on, but quickly these, these kids want to take it off and think, oh, I'm good now and go and party and hang out and fist bump, hug, all this other stuff. Couples want to close stamps. Oh, I'm sorry.
Right.
We got to check it at the door.
I was about to say talk about hotspot. Something went on in Devine. Devine has more cases.
Yes.
So, I mean, and again, you know, we can't pay ourselves to Devine. And something went on down there.
It takes us. It takes us one graduation party.
Exactly.
Exactly. And that's what I don't want to happen.
They're looking at the two police officers.
Yeah.
And Devine?
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Are they doing security at the, at the graduation party? So.
That's just something to throw out there that I forwarded just to you that way, you know, as a, and something the families probably didn't even think of.
Right.
Is, oh, we're all underneath the same household now.
Aaron, this is Saturday?
I believe this one is on Saturday.
This Saturday.
This Saturday, right.
I believe so, yeah. And then the other, the big one, you know, the really challenging one is going to be St. Louis Day. So the, they're looking at not doing any of, I mean, no beer garden, anything they'll do for, I think they're still looking at doing the raffles. I don't know if they figured out anything with the silent auction yet. So still working on that. But that'll be like nothing new. So the only thing they're looking at doing in person would be the, the drive-through food.
To-go plates.
To-go plates, right. Right now they're looking at a single, basically a single line going through Kennick Park. We're working on how do we keep them separated? How do we deal with like the, the folks that are on the grills, on the smokers? Obviously that's going to be really hot. So I'd recommend doing the full face shield. It's not where they can actually breathe with it. And you can get those pretty readily now. And walking through, how do you keep all of the workers there separated? How do you keep them, all of their area sanitized?
That's true.
We will continue to work through that and make sure that we are just absolutely meticulous, especially with anything that size. It's not terribly different than what the restaurants are doing right now. I actually walked into a restaurant last week and to get a to-go plate, not a single person in there had a mask on. And that's a great way for me to walk back out and remind you guys. And, you know, it's a personal responsibility in making sure that we're doing this. So I want to make sure that we're bringing this up. It is, it's a tricky place to be. You have people on both sides, people that think it's complete bunk. There's people like myself who understand that there are actual emergencies. And my wife works in the medical industry and deals with insurance cases. They are going through the spiking cases, the availability of beds. And so it, it is a serious issue that we need to take very seriously.
And just to give you an idea of how bad it's getting, when the state of Texas is coming to the Department of Defense and asking us to activate our mobile hospitals and stand them up in the state to help alleviate the problems there. I know San Antonio hospitals are going to BAMC and saying, please, please, can we bring? Well, no, because those beds are for the military beneficiaries and we got to have that. Plus we still have the wounded warriors coming back from over in the sandbox. So we can't inundate those. So now they're looking at standing up our mobile hospitals and everything. I mean, this is how, how bad it's getting. And we, we got to be very meticulous about this. I know people are sick of me here and saying this and everything, but this is, this is to the point we're living in right now. Until there's a vaccine and everybody's vaccinated, we got to be meticulous about this.
Right. And I don't expect it to happen to, it's not going to be over.
Oh, no, it's going to be eighteen months earliest.
Yep.
So.
What, is any loose tape?
No, 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 no. Vaccination.
Well, that's, that's late August too. So I think everything's kind of up in the air. It might get tighter before it gets looser.
And that's what I've explained to everybody is understand, and that's one of the reasons I think that, that the city staff's decision on Fourth of July, while it was not popular, it was, it was prudent. And I respect it. It's a great call. I was second guessing as Hondo was doing a drive-through on their fireworks, but even they canceled it the last minute, we would have lost another like five thousand dollars if we would have done that.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it was a good call and right now it's better to be conservative.
At the time, but it was a great call.
Yeah. So it's one of those hard things that you just got to do. Is there any other conversation you guys want to have on that? I want to make sure that I'm making you aware of anything that, that I'm working on. Obviously, Sheena's going to be involved with all of that.
Texas is seeing almost ten thousand a day.
Yeah.
They're, and they're second to Florida right now.
Right, so.
Yeah, these are fifteen thousand.
You can keep your head down now because it's everywhere, so.
Yep.
John?
And touching on it just because you mentioned it, maybe you told me, but somebody told me that the five thousand that we were going to lose, they're going to let, let us use as for deposit on next year's.
Yes, yeah, it's carried over.
Really?
Yeah, I've been great partners with that too.
Wow.
You know, we've had some people in the city that have been great partners.
That was our deposit money?
Yes.
Wow, that's awesome. I didn't hear that.
We've had great partners, you know, I, I went around, the chief had me go around or send a couple of officers and we went around and talked to the, I think we talked about this last time. We talked to all of the businesses that have a lot of people coming through, delivered out letters so they could post them on their windows so that they had something that they could actually point to people and say, you actually do have to follow this. It was a solid call on, that we had decided a few weeks ago to follow the governor's orders. So we didn't have that little blip that Medina had where you don't have to, okay, night. So that, I think it's been, the big thing here is consistency. And then we had like Tony Rodriguez and Bob Peterson worked with us on, I don't know if you guys noticed, but the park, they have the little private park down on Constantinople at the river.
Yeah.
And they've been having some.
The gates closed.
And that was, that was because of them.
No, that was a great plan.
And so it's, it's people like this that are leaning in and citizens that are leaning in, working in hand in hand with, with the city and getting these things done. So it's been a great partnership and I appreciate all the assistance with that. Okay, anything else on that? We'll try and keep it shorter next time, but it's, it's good conversation.
It is good conversation.
Come on, Sam.
Yep. And if you, if anybody needs links, I can shoot out a couple of links. If you don't mind just shooting it out to council, just if they want to do some additional research on the governor's orders, the amendments, a couple of other things, I can send some of those up.
Well, chief gets them every day, yes.
I'll shoot those up to you. No, if they're sporadic though, some orders I get there, they're all there. And then sometimes I have to send them out one or two to the end of the day. We get them all.
Well, that's another great point. Thank you for sending that up.
I don't go on, just following the list and that's what I do. I don't talk. I just hear what the judge is saying. Just kind of get the pulse of the county. Send that to me.
Yep. I like it.
And I did that too.
Cool. All right. Last item discussion, discussion on future agenda items.
What day next week are we meeting for the budget?
Friday.
On Tuesday at one o'clock. Would that work for you guys?
Yeah, we're thinking Tuesday, one, two, six. If that works, I know it's a long time, but.
We'll start kind of winding down at five o'clock, but.
Yeah, we'll try and keep it up to five.
We'll feed you.
Yeah, we'll feed you lunch.
So we're not meeting this Friday?
No.
For some reason that was on my calendar.
Oh, no.
Tuesday, one?
Tuesday, the twenty-first.
Yes.
It'll be for the general.
Thank you, said that.
Yeah, thank you.
You can come over if it.
Hey, no, I'm just wearing a mask.
July twenty-first, Tuesday.
So we're going to try and get through as much of it then. We'll go through really high level with the, the budget and then we'll reserve probably the next week before the council meeting, so it'll be extended again. Probably a little bit later, depending on how much stuff we still need to go over. And that we're, we're getting it at the end of the day, but not too late. Other agenda items?
Nothing at this time from this end.
Nothing for me?
That's McKee?
Nope.
We already discussed some of these, so, and then we were talking also about looking at water rights. So we want to do a full inventory of the water rights, understand how much we have, how much we use, how much we need, where it's coming from. And it's really just doing an inventory of that, kind of an educational bit on that. And then looking at, but I think we're going to be discussing budget, right? With the, with the IT budget. So instead of, because we're looking at it piece by, but I also want to look at it in whole. What services are they providing? What is the comfort level of staff with what they're doing? And looking at if there's anything that we can combine to gain efficiencies with that, but just get an overall picture of our, our IT spend. All right?
Sounds good.
If there is nothing else, have a motion to adjourn? Do we need to make that a motion? Did you tell me?
Go for it.